Madam Mayor, recording has begun. You unmute that. Madam Mayor, recording has begun. Yep.
Okay, so.
Twice.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our regular Town Council meeting on November 18th, 2025. I have officially called this meeting to order. Madam Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call? Certainly, Madam Mayor. Mayor James? Here. Councilman Gutenberg?
Here.
Councilman McCormick?
Here.
Councilman Sampson?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. Thank you very much. And if I could ask you all to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just a safe world. Thank you. Counsel, if you've had a moment to look at our agenda for this evening, I will entertain a motion.
Set motion.
Uh, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, when the roll call is given, please indicate by saying aye. If not, it is nay. Madam Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call? Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes. Thank you very much. And also, next on the agenda is a disclosure of our closed session for October 23rd, 2025. In accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act, general provision, Article 3-211, we are required to include special, specific information in the meetings when a public body meets in closed session. To ensure full compliance, we have attached the written statement that includes the reason for close, uh, for closing the meeting, the statutory authority permitting the closed session, a listing of topics discussed, the individuals present, and the actions taken. This documentation has been made part of the public record to maintain transparency and to meet the legal requirements of the Act. So the next on the agenda is a consent agenda. So with a consent agenda, since we have a full house today, and I'm sure this is why you came here, so thank you. So give me a moment to say this. It is, um, where there are items that don't need to be discussed. So we put them under, uh, the consent agenda, and we do a single motion, and they're important, but they don't require discussion. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye. If nay, uh, it will be, please, if no, please say nay. Um, Madam Town Clerk? Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes. Thank you very much. It brings us to our, um, part of our agenda that is public comment. Since you're all sitting here, I'm hoping that you have things to say. So if you'd like to come up, state your name, uh, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and, uh, if you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be awesome. Do I have anybody that would like to speak? I'm gonna get you later, just in a minute. All right, because you're all waiting here. Mr. Van Cleef, you sure do know how to pack a house, right? So, so since there are no, uh, public comments here, let's get down here and, and get some business done. We are here to swear in our newest officer. Chief, can you come on down too? Chief, um, can you say some nice words, nice words, about this gentleman before we start to swear any of it?
First off, thank you all for coming here tonight to celebrate Ryan. Uh, as most of you may or may not know, Ryan's been with us since 2019. Uh, he became a cadet for our department, and he was for that, or no, in 2019, he started with our Explorer Program. Um, he's a great success story that's rose from Explorer to Cadet, and now, you know, he's gonna be an officer starting tomorrow. So he's had a good journey. I think, uh, I think he's learned a lot from us and just quite a few other, uh, life lessons, but, uh, he's dealt with a lot of us, and we've all given him the best advice we can get, uh, to him and through his head, but I think he's made it through the other side. An excellent officer for our department, so I'm happy to have him on board. Um, and thank you all for being here. Madam Mayor?
Thanks. You ready to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow, I've been waiting a long time to do this.
I have been waiting too.
All right. So repeat after me. Please raise your right hand. Don't repeat that. I state your name.
I, Ryan Van Cleef.
Do swear?
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be?
Nah, I will be.
Faithful and bear true allegiance?
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
To support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
That I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the duties?
Execute the duties.
A police officer of the town of La Plata?
A police officer of the town of La Plata.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Making it official. Back out right now if you want.
No.
All right.
Without.
Yes. Wonderful. And as with any new officer, the floor is yours. Would you like to say, uh, I guess you got to be pinned first, right?
Yep.
You gotta receive your badge, make it official, and then the floor is yours.
I guess the floor is mine now.
You did. You got it, officer.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to my friends, family, coworkers back, and my fellow recruits of the 101st. Um, it's been a long journey, been very tough. I couldn't have done it without the help of Chief Norris, Captain Bagley, and our, uh, former chief Schinner. Um, and yeah, I'm just eager to get out there. I can't wait.
Thank you so much, and good luck tomorrow on your actual graduation. And that is, that's incredible. And I'm just gonna say a few words, because, you know, I saw you as a cadet, as an explorer, and come in through being our first cadet, and your determination has never wavered. So, um, I am so proud of you, and I hope you enjoy every moment tomorrow, because you have earned it.
Thank you, ma'am.
And you know my car. Please don't pull me over. Thank you. Let's give a round of applause for our newest officer. This is where I'm being nice, that if you would like to leave and celebrate this accomplishment, you can. Um, but if you'd like to stay, you are more than welcome. Okay. Thanks for staying, Chief. All right, next on our agenda is Municipal Government Works Month, and we mentioned a little bit about it, uh, last month. So we actually have a proclamation that I will quickly read here. Municipal Government Works Month is November 2025, whereas the town of La Plata was incorporated in 1888, and whereas Maryland is home to 157 municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials, and whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of La Plata is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore, now therefore we, the council of the town of La Plata, do hereby join the municipal, Maryland Municipal League, and proclaiming November as Municipal Government Works Month in the town of La Plata, Maryland, and do so commend this observation to all of our citizens. And it is signed by myself, Mayor James, Councilman Gutenberg, Councilman McCormick, Councilman Sampson, and Councilman Johnson. So thank you to all that helped run our town. Um, and that is just, it's not the elected officials who run the town. It is operations and everyone behind the scenes. So happy Municipal Month, um, to all. All right, next on our agenda is, um, we are going into matters of council discussion. So, Mr. Stevens, you are up.
All right, Counsel, good evening. I'm Chuck Stevens. I'm your town manager, and I'm going to, I think in the industry, they call it VAMP for a little bit, because Jamie Kendrick is gonna be online. He's actually gonna lead you through this presentation, but I think he's not here just yet. I think he was gonna join us at about a quarter past. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna set up the conversation. He's actually gonna brief on a couple of topics tonight for you, and they should be familiar, because we just talked about these in October. So, um, we're gonna discuss the Southwest Access Management Plan and the professional engineering services to keep that project moving forward. We're gonna talk, uh, deeper about the La Plata Bike Way and some additional services that we're desirous of getting from Mead and Hunt, and we'll explain all of that here shortly. And then we're gonna again talk about the La Plata Bike Way project, and this one's gonna be, uh, specifically talking about the non-title wetlands permit and that in-lie fee agreement, and we'll explain what that means when we get to that. Um, but if you remember from the conversation a few weeks ago, um, that's a really good deal for the town. It's gonna save us a lot of time and a lot of money. But the first one on the agenda this evening is the Southwest Access Management Plan. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead, and it looks like Jamie joined us.
Just came on.
Timing is everything.
I'm gonna hand it off. Perfect timing, sir. It's all yours.
Timing is everything. Good evening. Sorry about that. So the first one is the Southwest Access Management Plan, and we discussed this project at the, uh, one of the October meetings, and the, the plan to move forward, uh, is logistically, uh, to work with a contract, uh, let me back up. Federal regulations allow a local government receiving Safe Streets funds to, uh, piggyback off of a contract from another jurisdiction. If we had to go out, uh, under our own contract, um, it would probably add three to five months, uh, to the project, and not obviously then make the deadline, or soft deadline, I'll say, for the, um, uh, to have the, the concept and cost estimate by May. Uh, so we are recommending, uh, that Mead and Hunt, which did the initial study, uh, be, uh, brought on to continue the work, uh, using a contract from the city of Cambridge that's, uh, Safe Streets for All and federally compliant. Uh, the scope of work, uh, that they gave us is 175,000. That covers all the way through, um, preliminary design, and I know Councilmember McCormick had a couple of questions. I hope we answered them about what that means. It's a little hard to explain, but it basically tells us the precise location, what the impacts are, uh, and what the, uh, the impacts both in terms of traffic as well as, uh, environmental and likewise. So it really sets us up to, um, move quickly to final design if and when the project is funded for construction. Uh, the 175 comes from the Safe Streets for All Grant, 80% uh, federal, 20% local. Um, and, uh, happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Jamie, and thank you very much for bringing this in for piggybacking. You know, when we have been working on this for, um, a few years now, and just to, uh, piggyback on to another competitive source is, uh, just another way to keep this project moving. So thank you for that. Um, Counsel, any, uh, questions for, uh, Jamie?
I, I don't have a question, no.
Okay.
No questions, thank you.
All right. Good. So I am looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation. Um, Madam Town Clerk, could you please take a consensus to see, a roll call to see if there's a consensus to move forward? Councilman Gutenberg?
Yes.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a consensus has been achieved. Fantastic. All right, next is our, um, sorry about that, is our bike path, one of two on there. Jamie, I think it is still you.
It is. Good evening again. Um, so this, uh, item before you is to, uh, allocates funds to Mead and Hunt and its subconsultants to complete the design, uh, in part based on some issues that arose, uh, having to do with, uh, stormwater management and coordination with Heritage Green, some issues that arose, uh, from the county in terms of, on the county side of the project regarding utilities and geotechnical, uh, and should get the plans cleaned up and ready for adrtisment by, uh, approximately May 1st. Uh, so this is a continuation of the existing contract. Uh, approximately one-third of this will be reimbursed, uh, subject to the final approval of the county agreement, hopefully the next few weeks. Um, we're not concerned that it won't get signed, just a matter of timing. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Counsel, any questions on this?
Hey, Jamie, uh, thank you for answering a couple of the questions I had beforehand. Uh, wanna make sure I said that. Yeah, I'm, I'm, and this is strictly user error, I think, but can you help walk me through just real quick, actual cash or, or cost that the town's gonna be incurring here? I'm not talking about any grants, any of that. I'm still just a little confused. I've seen a document 78K, but then I see town match might be up to 130K, just for edification. What's the, uh, what's the expectation there?
So it's, there's a lot of dependencies here, and I don't mean that to, to evade, but to say that, uh, you know, the, the final split between, for example, the, uh, county and the town as to a couple of specific issues, uh, some of the, um, the additional, uh, money that's likely to come from the state. When we initially presented this, it was, um, obviously a less expensive project. Things happen over time. Uh, I think the answer is going to ultimately be in the 130 to $300,000 range in terms of cash exposure. Um, I, I think that's a reasonable, um, I can probably say that with an 85% confidence level, that assumes, and I feel comfortable that it will occur, that the, uh, state, as they often do, uh, puts in additional once the actual bids are in. Uh, and there's a couple of sources for that, one of which we've had a formal conversation about, and one of which, um, we've not, but we've known how this kind of has worked in other projects. So if I were a betting man, I would say in the 130 to $300,000 range over probably a three-year spend period.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, uh, match is obviously what you said the last time we met as well. So I just, I got confused in the report. I just wanna make sure I had that clear. Thank you very much.
It is a little bit confusing, and I, I can assure you that the, the mix will change three or four times by the time we're, we're all done, but I think that aggregate number is roughly the same.
Understood. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. So we're looking for a consensus to move this, um, forward. Uh, Madam Town Clerk, would you please take a roll call? Councilman Gutenberg?
Yes.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, a consensus has been achieved. Fantastic. And then, um, the next one is the bike project, but now it's the non-titled wetlands permit in lieu of, uh, the agreement. It's yours again, Jamie.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel members, this, um, item is, uh, a pretty significant win for the project when it comes to cost and schedule. Uh, when the county's portion of the project, that is, uh, you know, at and above North, uh, Lower Spanish Regional Park came in, um, after some, some re-investigation, uh, the, the threshold for wetland, um, mitigation, uh, kicked in. Um, and the, if it was just the town project, we would have been slightly under, and we would have been okay, but once that came in, um, we, we were well over the, the threshold. Excuse me. Uh, I won't go into the types of wetlands, because I'm not a subject matter expert, but I'd be happy to send reference material on palestrine forested wetlands and emergent wetlands. Um, so, uh, bottom line is, we thought when that first determination was made, first conversation with Department of the Environment, uh, that we were looking at about a half million dollar cost and an 18-month delay, uh, to, to hit their typical, uh, requirements. Uh, we, uh, managed to negotiate to do a fee in lieu, uh, rather than having to build a whole new, uh, wetland somewhere in the, in the area. So that got us down to about $157,000. Um, and about two-thirds of that is to be reimbursed by the county.
All right, thank you for that. And, um, the other amounts are covered by grants. Is that, uh, is that?
Correct. They're, they're, they're in the mix of that, that I mentioned before, so yes.
And I see where the, uh, county is, um, scheduled to reimburse us for almost $100,000 of that, 99,000, 456, and change. Um, so it's, there's so many parts to this, as, as you and I have worked on this, um, for, for years now. So it's good to see that this is being addressed and that the, it will pretty much be a wash as far as funding and not costing the taxpayers anything on this one due to a grant. All right, I will open it up to the floor. Uh, Councilman Gutenberg?
I, I don't have any questions. It's just another good example of partnerships.
Yeah.
Right, as, as we do things. So, um, yeah, that, that's all I really have.
Councilman McCormick? Councilman Sampson? Councilman Johnson?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Um, Madam Town Clerk, could I please have you do a roll call, uh, for a consensus to move this to legislation? Councilman Gutenberg?
Yes.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, consensus have been achieved. Wonderful. And this will bring us to our last item under Matters of Council Discussion, and that's the La Plata Town Council Meeting Schedule and Fiscal Year, uh, 2027 Budget Schedule.
All right, that's correct. Counsel, you're back with me. I think we're done with, uh, Mr. Kendrick for this evening, and if he doesn't get a chance to speak again, it's like they say, "Thank you, Jamie, for being here," and walking us through that. Um, Counsel, the, the next item on your agenda this evening is talk about your calendar schedule for next year. That's, um, 2026. Um, we're gonna talk about your meeting schedule as well as the, uh, budget calendar that, that's presented in your packet. So you have a pretty extensive staff report. I'm not gonna read it all to you, but I will paraphrase it. So basically, the town charter, um, section C 3-4 and chapter 13-1 of the town code dictate that the town council shall hold regular meetings at, at such time as may be prescribed by its rules, but not less frequently than once each month. In order to ensure government transparency and to provide equitable opportunities for public engagement in the decision-making processes that affect their lives, the Maryland Open Meetings Act requires state and local public bodies to hold their meetings in a manner that is open to the public and to give the public adequate notice of those meetings and their expected content. Um, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, echoes this principle in its best practices when they state that good public participation practices can help governments be more accountable and responsive to their communities, and can also improve the public's perception of governmental performance and the value the public receives from their government. Transparency is a core value of governmental budgeting. Developing a transparent budget process will improve the government's credibility and trust within the community. As far as fiscal impact, there is no direct fiscal impact associated with the, the agenda item this evening. However, public input on decisions about service levels and preferences, community priorities, and organizational performance can affect organizational budget priorities. And then, of course, we walked through in the staff report our strategic plan alignment, um, our sustainability considerations, and our ADA considerations as well. Your recommended action this evening, Counsel, is to adopt Resolution 25-28, the La Plata Town Council 2026 Meeting Schedule and Fiscal Year 2027 Budget Schedule of Events. And we're happy to have a conversation, answer any questions Counsel may have this evening.
All right, Counsel, I'm gonna start with Councilman Johnson down here. Do you have any questions?
What a coincidence. Oh, I do. So I know Chuck, I, I talked to you briefly, uh, when the agenda first came out. Um, I know there's been a lot of conversations since this, this term has started with work sessions and bringing those back. This was not released for work sessions. Um, I think it's helpful, um, as we go through our journey, what that looks like, especially with agenda item requests. We're a very active council, uh, with a lot of priorities that, um, we want in the pipeline, in a way to get those in the pipeline with everyone's discussion and comments is a healthy way to do it versus, you know, just submitting a agenda item and then coming before us on the day of the meeting and get the gown to discussion.
Yeah. So Counsel, what, what do you have for your consideration this evening? When you're talking about the meeting schedule now for the town council, not the budget calendar, um, this would be the calendar for your regular standing meetings, the meetings like this, the 6:00 PM Tuesday evenings. Um, if we want to add work sessions throughout the year in 2026, we can absolutely do that. Um, your rules of procedure right now, though, are gonna provide a constraint that we need to operate within, and when it talks about adding items to an agenda, it, it gives, you know, guidelines that say it has to be submitted to me some days in advance, and then it has to be presented on the first month of the meeting, or the first meeting of the month. Um, so what I would recommend is if there are items where Counsel would like to have a work session, what I would suggest is, and, and, and I believe that this is a very common practice across municipalities, is that we host the work session prior to the regularly scheduled meeting on that first Tuesday of any given month. So if I look at the calendar and I look at the regular meetings in January, your first regular meeting is January 13th. If there were a topic or two that Counsel wanted to have in a work session, meaning it's still in this room, it's still a public conversation, the cameras are rolling, it's recorded, there's an agenda, we're just not gonna make a decision, we're not gonna take public comment on the work session items, um, we, we could schedule that to precede this meeting. Um, that's a common practice. I mean, that would mean, though, the impact is that the work session would start at, say, 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 13th, and then we would wrap, you know, maybe at 10 till, um, quick break, and then reset the room, reset the recording, and meet, um, for your formal meeting with whatever's on the agenda. If that is not satisfactory, and the Counsel would like to do something else, um, I'm, I'm gonna have to really massage the rules of procedure to see how we can make that work. Um, and then I don't know that we need to include work sessions, um, as part of your standing calendar. I think what's important about this calendar is, is we have a high degree of, of reliability that we're going to have at least these meetings throughout the year. We can add work sessions based on, on demand and request by the Council.
What, what do you mean massage the rules of procedure for when we wanna have a work session?
Well, right now, the rules of procedure talk about how to get items on an agenda, and so that's where I'm conflicted, because it's very prescriptive in that it says, um, an agenda item has to be brought forward to me, the town manager, and then it has to be placed on the first meeting of the month.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we're just wordsmithing at this point. Um, my question is to do the work session to address and discuss the agenda items before we move it forward to a regular meeting. Um, that way is a healthy way of addressing whatever, uh, items we're bringing forward. Um, and the other thing would be, you know, trying to get, I think we try to get a work session or a special meeting scheduled in October and November, and people, calendars didn't line up for various reasons.
Correct.
So getting this aligned, that we know there's a potential, if it's not every month, if it's once a quarter, once every three months, however we do this, um, that was the point of the conversation, I think, since the beginning regarding work sessions. Um, I see, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, Councilman Johnson, if I may. The way I see this is, um, we already have The way I see this is we already have things in the queue that we do want to have a work session for. So we're always going to be running a month, at least a month behind. So hypothetically, if we do the July, I mean, the January 13th, we already have things that we could do a work session on. And we, if we took just one topic of that and started at 5 o'clock, say, on the 13th or the 27th, as Mr. Stevens said, we can always add work sessions, which are very easy to do. The whole hang up is getting the agenda like like he had just said, but I think we're settled on that because we're, if we keep on doing that, we're always running a month or two behind on getting something on or a future work session. So that may help a little bit. Because we're not starting cold right now. We have a couple of things in the queue that could go on a work session that should go on a work session so we can discuss before we take action on a policy that we would like to enact.
Yeah, no, I agree. My request was very specific and a little different. If it's easy to do, we could probably do it, in my opinion. It might not have to be every month. We got to figure out what that what that looks like, but there needs to be a process in place that we were, you know, and just to bring this up real quick. Council McCormick, not a dig at you, but like, you know, the homestead stuff, like, we didn't know until a week before what the the content was going to be. We could have had that conversation the first meeting on the month and all right, cool, let's let's bring your bring your agenda summary. We'll discuss a little bit more in October or whatever it was, like that way we all have alignment of what's coming down the pipe and not getting it seven days in advance to try to digest what our thoughts are, especially with something that's so complex. Every matter is not going to be complex. But I think I might not be explaining it well, but I see Mayor James to Paul.
Yeah, if I could, I think the the issue that the town manager is pointing out to us is that he is bound by a constraint within our rule of procedure that says he has to react within seven days to get that on the agenda. And because of that time boxing that is built into our procedure, it kind of forces him to have that working session like that night. And and I think that doesn't solve the problem that I have reacted to here, which is that if we have a council member wants to have an item on the agenda, there's not an effective amount of time for us to have a discussion and take a vote on whether or not it is an idea that is even, there's capacity to deal with, A, or that that it's it's a mature enough idea for, you know, an active session where we're going to be asked to make a decision. So I think what we owe ourselves is a change to that rule in a way that would free up the 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 time constraint that the town manager has so that we can do what the mayor and Councilman Johnson were just suggesting, which is that we give ourselves breathing room to have a working session that allows for an agenda item to come down the road based on actions that come out of that working session. Does that sound right? Okay.
I was just going to give a verbal response. I nodded, but just for the record, yes, sir, I was scribbling notes as you were talking because I think that sounds on point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Sampson.
Yes, I just had one question to clarify because I think I'm confused and I want to make sure I'm clear on this. So I don't have it in front of me, but as I understand it right now, and if I'm wrong, just say I'm wrong so I can, we can move on. But as memory serves me, we had a meeting several months ago about how to get things on the agenda. And in that, we were supposed to have a discussion to determine if an agenda item would come up, and we all did that and voted. So if I'm understanding correctly, and if I want clarity, I guess my, well, I have two questions. The first question, so what is the difference between that discussion and the working session?
So, Counsel, I think that's exactly the question here is because the way I'm reading your rules of procedure, I don't see a difference necessarily. Because of, as Counsel Gutenberg stated, the way the rules of procedure are written, I I've actually searched the document looking for the words work session, working session, and and they're just not there. So when I read that, given that interpretation, I do feel constrained that there is but one agenda. And and I've I've got to follow the rules that are in the procedures.
And so my only other question is, is the and I'm going from memory, so I could be wrong. But the whole issue of coming up with the, or the whole purpose, I'd say, of having that discussion for an agenda item was because of the problems that we were alluding to about the seven days. That was my recollection that there were things that we were trying to get on the agenda and that we couldn't get them on the agenda. And that's why we moved to having a discussion. So my only other question is then is the seven days even valid? Because it would seem to me I could put something in now and then it may be discussed in February, you know, and in and February would determine if it would even be put on the agenda. So it just seems to me the two seem contradictory because going from memory, once again, that was the whole issue that spurred all this. And I'm and I'm just trying to see, you know. And let me just say for the record, I think we're getting or at least distracted by the actual task at hand, which is this calendar, which I do support, but I'm just going from memory since it came up. It was the seven days that was the problem because we couldn't get things on the agenda. So we moved to a discussion. And so that seems to me to eradicate the need for the seven days. Am I misunderstanding?
I don't believe you're misunderstanding, and I did bring the rules of procedure with me this evening because it does state. So right now, the rules as they're written, it does still have that seven days in there. So that what I think what you're referring to is is a requested change that I haven't provided back to Council yet to modify your rules of procedure.
Okay. You can, okay. And I don't have any additional comments on this. So we're looking for a consensus to move this to legislation. If you are in favor, please indicate it when a roll call is done. All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Yes.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, my first no.
Mayor James.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. All right.
And if I if I real quick, Madam Mayor, if I might interject, I just say, I mean, it's clear to me hearing Council, I hear your intent, and I've got to solve this problem. Okay. And I respect Counsel Johnson's no because he's dissatisfied with process. I totally get it. I've got notes here. I've heard the conversation. We'll fix this and we'll provide a mechanism to allow for items to be presented in a work session for this council. And we will figure out the cadence and frequency. I hear you, Council. We'll solve it.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Please.
May I correct the record? There was no motion. This was a consensus achieved.
Consensus, yes. Sorry, the motion is forthcoming. All right. Next on the agenda is our, is it legislation? I am so sorry. It's legislation, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it is you again.
Okay, Council, this is going to be the first reading of ordinance 25 dash 09. This is an amendment to the town of La Plata fiscal year 2026 fee schedule. This is the first reading for introduction. This is an ordinance concerning amendment to the town of La Plata fiscal year 2026 fee schedule for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2026 fee schedule, dealing with fees set by the town of La Plata and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Next is Resolution 25 dash 29.
Okay, this is Resolution 25 dash 29, the Southwest Access Management Plan, Professional Engineering Services for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption. A resolution concerning the Southwest Access Management Plan Professional Engineering Services for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Mead and Hunt to perform engineering and related services in furtherance of the Southwest Access Management Plan and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 25 dash 29 as presented?
Said motion.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Do I do I have any discussion? Go ahead.
Mr. Stevens, just for clarification here again, for folks that may be listening for the first time, this is strictly just the amendment to ensure that the the difference between the actual price of this service versus what we expected, that's the change rate from the $10 to $25?
No.
No? Where were we?
I'm sorry, Council McCormick, so you're referring to the ordinance? That's the fee schedule.
Got it.
Okay, that was the first reading. So I don't believe that is this this motion is not on that ordinance.
That's what I was clarifying. Okay.
No, it is just.
Southwest access.
Yeah.
And that's why I was making sure because there was no discussion on that. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
If you are in any other discussion for Resolution 25 dash 29, it motion has been made and properly seconded. If you are in favor, please indicate so. If not, please indicate as well. Madam Town Clerk.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor James.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to Resolution 25 dash 30.
All right, Resolution 25 dash 30 is the La Plata Bike Way Additional Services, Mead and Hunt, for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption. This is a resolution concerning the La Plata Bike Way Additional Services to Mead and Hunt for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Mead and Hunt to complete the La Plata Bike Way and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 25 dash 30 as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please indicate your intent when you have Madam Town Clerk give a roll call, yea if you are in favor, nay if you're not.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor James.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you. Brings us to Resolution 25 dash 31.
All right, Council, this is Resolution 25 dash 31, the La Plata Bike Way Project. This is the non-titled wetlands permit in lieu fee agreement for introduction and consideration of adoption. This is a resolution concerning the La Plata Bike Way Project, non-titled wetlands permit in lieu fee agreement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into an in lieu fee agreement with the Maryland Department of the Environment to mitigate wetland impacts of the La Plata Bike Way Project to enter into environmental permitting agreements and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 25 dash 31 as presented?
Said motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye. If not, nay. Madam Town Clerk.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor James.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you. And the last item of legislation on our agenda today is Resolution 25 dash 28.
All right, Resolution 25 dash 28, the La Plata Town Council 2026 meeting schedule and fiscal year 2027 budget schedule of events for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning the La Plata Town Council 2026 meeting schedule and fiscal year 2027 budget schedule of events for the purpose of maintaining regulated and publicly accessible schedules of town council meetings and enhancing public participation in the budget process and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 25 dash 28 as presented?
Said motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Stevens, Ms. Minor, I asked you this question already via email. I know you answered just, I did promise I would ask it on the record. So your experience in La Plata County, your experience, Ms. Minor, being the assistant town manager and town manager for different time periods, confident in this budget schedule, correct, obviously presented to us here. I have a lot of confidence speaking for myself. I just want to give you an opportunity to maybe share experience and why you think this budget is squared away for this town.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Counselor. I'm going to use the term, I don't like to speak with military colloquialisms too often, but I'm going to here because no plan survives contact with the enemy. So it's a good plan. In fact, it's textbook. I literally went and pulled out my textbook and looked at budgeting. When you ask the question, make sure, yes, this is this is how you do a municipal budget. We're following the textbook guidance and the GFOA guidance. But it's compressed. There's a lot of work to do. You've got a day in there, March 17th. We've talked about it. I've asked you to circle it on your calendars. It's going to be a full day. We're going to, you're going to meet with all the department heads. You're, we're going to go over the budget. If if we get through all of that in the one day, then yes, I feel a high level of confidence that that we'll get the rest of it wrapped up. If we don't get through all of it and we need to build in a couple of hours either during an existing meeting or even try to schedule a special meeting to hypothetically cover the CIP or something like that, that we didn't get enough detailed conversation about. We're going to have to flex and we're going to have to to get that on your calendars. But but the calendar that you have in front of you, high level of confidence that that it will, it will serve the purpose well. I think it'll inform Council. I think you'll walk out of this budget cycle having a much greater understanding of municipal budgets and your role. You're going to know your budget. You're going to be able to meet with your constituents and and look them in the eye and say with great confidence that you are being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And you're going to have a budget that reflects your your policy priorities when when we're all done. This schedule gives you all of that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? So it has been, there's a motion and it has been properly seconded. If you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye. If not, please say nay. Madam Town Clerk.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor James.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the report from the town manager.
All right, Council, I don't have a lot for you this evening, just a couple of items real quick. Earlier today, if all went well, postcards should have been printed and and hit the the post office to be delivered ideally before Tuesday, no later than the Tuesday of next week. This is a variation on on what we've done in the past. These postcards are to inform our residents about the change in trash and recycling pickup over the holiday weekend. So or week. So next week, we've got the Thanksgiving week and town hall, as you know, is going to be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th, as well as our Public Works Department, which means trash pickup is not going to occur on those days. What has changed from years past, and and I know that a lot of residents have lived in this town for a long time and and they're used to how things have always operated, but there is a change this this year in the trash collection pickup schedule. It went out in the town notes in the September edition. We are going to do our very best to be aggressive with our social media, and we're going to use all the tools that we can use to get the message out there. I did not have a high level of confidence, Counselor McCormick, that that we were going to be successful. And so last week, Michelle and Karina and I talked about it, and we did commission and have printed up using the same printer that does our town notes, a postcard that's going to go to all 4,000 plus utility account addresses on file with the town of La Plata. And it's going to tell them for the Thanksgiving week and the Christmas week that town hall is closed. And if your regular trash collection day was on Thursday, November 27th, for example, your trash will now be picked up on Tuesday, November 25th. So it actually precedes the holiday. That's the change. So if you're, and I'm going to say it here, just in case anybody's listening and we want to get the word out, we're going to use every every tool available. I just said that. So the trash pickup for Thursday, Thanksgiving Day is going to be on Tuesday. It's going to precede the holiday. On Friday, your trash pickup is going to be on the Wednesday. It's going to precede the holiday. And then the next week, your trash will go back, revert to its regularly scheduled day. So because it was a change and because it's different and new, I felt like it was worth the effort for the town to spend a little bit of money. And I think we spent right about $1,600 and full transparency, we spent $1,600 to 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 use this extra step of communications to connect with our residents because we know that even with this step, we're probably going to miss some people. They might get the postcard, they might get it late, they might not, they might throw it away with recycling and not even read it because they don't realize that it has substance. But we wanted to do everything that we possibly could to try and catch as many people as we could. So we did that. The printers had them printed. They're supposed to be delivered to the post office today and hopefully delivery to mailboxes no later than no later than Tuesday of next week. So, can I ask answer any questions on that because it is different?
No, I love that idea because you are reaching a population that may not be on social media or on the internet for them to know. And that is the one thing that the town provides. One of the very important services is, you know, for one of our utilities, but pack, yeah, for picking up trash and and the recycling is.
Unchanged. Recycling is unchanged.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. That is, I love that idea.
And yard waste pickup is also mentioned on on the postcard, so.
Great.
And and Mayor, to your point, we do hear a lot of criticism that not everybody is on social media.
Right.
But we are challenged in our community. We don't have a local print newspaper that we could pay to put an ad in, for example, and and help get the word out there. So, we're using all the tools that we have and and I felt like this was a prudent measure and I appreciate Council's support.
Wonderful.
Then. The last thing that I have for you, Counsel, is you would have had a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. However, we don't have any agenda items for you. And so, we're going to go ahead and counsel that meeting for next Tuesday, one week for tonight, and I want Counsel to enjoy the holiday week. That is all. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, Councilman Gutenberg, any?
Just a last important.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry about that.
No, thank you. And Mr. Stevens, I want to make sure, again, to your point, there might be some people that are listening for the first time or might hear this later. So, I want to shout out a couple of things in your report here. The first one is obviously the APFO update. Thank you very much for putting up, you know, first and foremost, probably tell, I speak for myself, not the Council, but definitely a top item. So, thank you for the the detailed update there. Quick question I did ask via email, so you probably got an opportunity to see it, but there was a part under the Rules of Procedure conversation and that we're closely working with special counsel. I guess I just need a little bit of a better explanation or more of an explanation. We don't have to talk about it now on the record, but again, like, everything I've read, folks I've talked to, this seems relatively boilerplate. I'm just, I guess I'm confused on the timeline and, you know, if if you have any sort of insight into we should expect this in January, February, or is it longer and if there's a reason why it's longer?
Yeah. Counsel, I've received this question a couple of times in the last 48 hours, so I will provide Counsel before weeks end a timeline to expect that. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right, Counsel reports.
All right.
Gutenberg.
Thank you. So, unlike our agenda next week, which has pretty much got nothing going on, I had a very active couple of weeks. So, I've got four things in particular that I just wanted to let members of the Council know that that I attended and participated in. So, back on November 4th, I attended the the Charles County Economic Fall Forum that was over in Indian Head at the Velocity Center. What a great resource the county has over there and what a what a great, really great event that was to hear local county leaders and state leaders talk to us about partnerships in economic development. You know, the kinds of partnerships that they were talking about aren't what we were talking about tonight, but tonight was about a lot of partnerships, honestly, right? Like, a lot of good projects tonight that we've talked about in the past here, you know, where the town is is getting a lot of benefit, a net benefit to our partnerships with the county and the state in 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 terms of these projects and the way they're funded. I mean, we really, you know, we we are expending some resources, but we we are a net benefit to us to the amount of partnerships that we have with with the other parts of local government that are helping us achieve those things. So, I think that's really good and kind of is alignment with that. The other thing that happened on Tuesday, November 4th, we had a Planning Commission meeting. That one had a really interesting, that the last half of that meeting, we had a pretty lengthy discussion that if you if if members of the Council didn't get to see it, we're really talking about some some policy things around the way code is interpreted with streetwits. And it's an important discussion because, you know, it it involves things policy-wise that may even come to the Council where we are looking at public safety issues, but they're complex because they also have knock-on impacts to the cost of infrastructure and service fees that that are associated with infrastructure. And so, there's some good conversation that that happened. There's some necessary conversations that happen there that I'll just call out to people's attention. Then on Wednesday, November 12th, I was invited to come talk to the the Maryland Building Industry Association in Waldorf, the the Charles County Chapter of the MBIA. And and that was to just have a general discussion with them about planning issues and goals. And and when they invited me, they let me know that, you know, Mayor James, you've you've been to talk with them before. They let me know that, you know, all the current sitting members of the the county commissioners have been there. So, I felt very honored that they wanted to 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 kind of have me in there for a discussion with them as well. But when I when I when I accepted discussion, when I showed up, what I let them know is I'm I'm special. I'm different than everybody else that's come there before in that I'm a member of La Plata's Town Planning Commission, which means I have ex parte constraints that the other speakers did not. So, that that was addressed right at the beginning of the meeting and I let them know the boundaries that I was operating within in kind of having those discussions. So, so basically what that means is that I wasn't able to discuss with anyone in the room or or off the public record anything that that is a an issue that's before the town. So, what we did talk about were general kind of planning things. We talked about things like the staffing in the planning department. You know, I was able to report to them that this month and I met him today, the new planning, the senior planner that is here to support, Mr. Dooley, our planning director. And that that was that that's well-received news. You know, it's been something that's been been ongoing for a while for us that that has been a challenge for first for our throughput. And we just talked about general kind of, you know, goals, our 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 process and upcoming the comprehensive plan that's going to be starting, right? Like, over the next, you know, probably into next year as we start to like set ourselves up for that. So, that that was a good good interaction. And then the last thing was the following day from that, November 13th, I was able to attend the Local Government Insurance Trust meeting, annual meeting that was in Annapolis. And that that was that that was good. And then the the thing that that I I did out there in the afternoon that was important was the I attended the the Academy for Excellence in Local Governance course on ethics, right? And so, so I've attended some of those courses as well that are at the the MML conferences. So, this was in addition to that. And those are always good good events. Met met a lot of faces that I've seen before at some of the other events and now and so starting to starting to get to know some people in some other municipalities. So, I think those are worthwhile. And then then the last thing I'll say is I'll just, you know, talking about your your report today on the the APFO, I'm really glad that that is progressing. We're going to see that by the end of the year. And I'll just I'll just sort of call out why, one of the reasons why that's so important today in watching the county commissioners meeting, the there was a speaker that came, a group that came to have to report on the cancellation of a project, an affordable housing project that is that was approved, had state grant money associated with it, and they came to actually let the the commissioners know that that project was being canceled. The reason why that project was being canceled is because when it started, they did not know they were going to run into water allotment issues that we have here in the town of La Plata. And what I the the thing that really I think is unfortunate when I hear how that happened is and that I think and where an APFO is going to help that in the future, right? So, folks did a lot of work to bring that plan together, bring bring stakeholders and partnerships, right? Back to partnerships. A lot of people put a lot of work for a number of years to plan the project, go out and coordinate funding with state partners, county. And because we didn't have an APFO, we didn't have good reporting on what our water allotment scenario was. And I think if we had an APFO back then, what we would have done is had an accounting that would have told us and told that project sponsor that that they should wait until we resolve it or and and that that would have prevented some of the work that was done and the unfortunate, you know, I know that you could tell just by the look on folks' faces, right? Like, that that was not a happy thing to have to come and let the commissioners know. And and I'm I'm sure they're they're letting the state representatives as well know that 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 wasn't able to happen. So, it's just another reason why it's going to be so important for us to finish that work, do it, you know, expeditiously, which we are doing. And I and I think it's going to be it's going to be helpful for a lot of reasons. And that's just one of them, so.
Counselor, if I can, I just want to be crystal clear.
Yeah.
So, we're going to have draft language to you in December. We're not going to have an item for consideration ready.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, I'm I'm very eager on this. So, thank you for tempering that with with the reality of that. Thank you. That's all.
Good report.
Councilman McCormick?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, a couple, couple of items as well. So, first and foremost, the town had the opportunity to celebrate an awesome Veterans Day parade right here. So, all five of us saw the Assistant Town Manager out there getting everybody organized and running around, doing a great job. So, thank you, Michelle. I saw Director Phipps as well at the event, running around, making sure folks were organized. So, thank you, Director Phipps. And obviously, Chief back there, thank you for all the police officers that either worked overtime or their regular shift to keep that parade up and running and safe. A lot of Charles County Sheriff's Officers out in the parade, a lot of great local groups represented and coming down and really recognizing our our veteran population and celebrating La Plata. So, thank you for everybody who came. And in a final thanks to Wayne, my my driver at the event. So, Wayne, if you're listening, thank you very much. That was awesome getting a in a Corvette and having some fun going down, you know, the the main streets here and seeing a lot of folks out there, which is interesting because when I was actually walking back to the car with my wife and my son, I had a resident actually come up, or I think it's a resident, but somebody who was at the parade actually came up and said, hey, are you are you one of the people that was up on the stage? And I said, yes, I was. And he goes, what were you doing up there? I said, I'm a council member. Said the mayor was in the middle. You know, all the council members up there said, oh, you guys are the Town Council of La Plata. You guys are the Accountability Council. And that was the phrase that this random individual that came up to me said. And I thought that was that was an interesting phrase to hear, the Accountability Council. So, one of the things that that happened today early on, and we use this term a lot in business, which is scaffolding, building upon. So, Councilman Gutenberg just brought up in his report how important that APFO is and Mr. Stevens obviously telling us this is what you should expect by December and, you know, I think a tale of caution that Councilman Gutenberg was kind of bringing up, if we don't have an APFO, what could potentially happen. Obviously, I think an APFO is good. But one of the things that we did today was the facilities master plan during that consent agenda. I think it's just another item in the the war chest for Mr. Stevens and this this town staff to have to ensure we're proactively planning, we're not being reactionary in nature. And again, to hear that from a random individual, like, hey, you guys are the Accountability Council, to hear that we're moving forward with these proactive measures and these proactive protections for our town to ensure these projects go ahead correctly, I think, is is a really great testament, just some feedback I want to share with with the other four folks up here. So, great to hear that from from a couple of residents as well. And then finally, I want to shout out Officer Van Cleef. Incredible that two meetings in a row, we got to do a couple of oaths of office or a reaffirmation, in in your case, Chief, with you fully stepping into that role. But to see Officer Van Cleef's family getting so emotional with that hug reminds me a lot of, I'm sure, your experience, Councilman Gutenberg, your experiences, Madam Mayor, you know, pinning your husband and Councilman Sampson and even, you know, Mr. Stevens, like, those are emotional moments when you when you truly take an oath of office and, you know, you you state that you're going to defend the Constitution of this state, this country, and do right by our residents. It was it was just really cool to see a cadet that went through the entire program and get that done. So, congratulations to you, Chief, for getting another great police officer here. And I'm really excited to see what he does under your tutelage to to keep La Plata safe. So, thank you very much for that and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, the only thing I have is I want to thank the staff for our Design Review Board meeting. We had a excellent meeting on November 12th. Director Phipps was heading that up and she had help with that. And we approved three submissions. All of them went well. And so, I just want to thank the staff on it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, thank you. So, on November the 12th, we had a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting and it was a healthy dialogue. One, exciting news, the the bid process is open for the Will's Playground, Will's Park Playground upgrade. And hopefully that is wrapped up by the end of the calendar year and a contract is awarded to get that up and going. We had a lot of conversation regarding the amphitheater at Will's Park. And I later learned that I guess there was a will of a council at the time to go pit that fort. There seemed to not be too much concern from the commission of not necessarily doing an amphitheater. What was a concern was, one, will there still be a area for the soccer team to practice? And two, can that money be re-appropriated to upgrading, taking the playground out of it, but upgrading the the basketball court, the tennis court, the walkway, et cetera? Sure.
Do you want me to try and reply to that or is that more of a rhetorical question?
There was a consensus. I mean, I don't, I'm sure it's come back up, but yeah, you could be fine with it.
So, the funds that were used, that were that were set aside for those projects were were ARPA dollars. ARPA dollars were the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that came down from the federal government in response to the COVID pandemic. The way that the town has accounted for those funds, all of the ARPA constraints are no longer in place. So, the what funds are left unspent from the ARPA allocations, the treasurer tracks in the fund balance as a separate line item. And so, those would be dollars that this council could. If the if the question was, could those dollars be reallocated? Yes, they could. It would take some procedural things to get there because there was a prior council did pass a resolution about the amphitheater. So, there could be a way to do that, but could the dollars be reallocated? Yes, they could.
All right, yes, that's good to know. Thank you. So, just the most exciting part was that the bid process is underway for the playground. And then I also, too, attended the Legent Annual Conference. There was a there was a focus on emergency preparedness and what that means and how organizations really prepare and, you know, make sure documents and town plans are accessible, not if a disaster happened, but when it happens, those coming to assist us have the information they need. And we, I also sat through the after class that was instructed by the Director of Prince George's County Office of Ethics and Accountability, which was great because he had some great insight into live examples across the state and, you know, different type of the different type of ways local governments interpret the ethics statute, not for like your own, but it's a baseline and you could always do so much more. So, that was a great afternoon, two hours, as part of the Academy for Excellence Core Class. And I believe that's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. And it's not because I have to, I have my report, but I'm going to brag about Councilman Gutenberg and Councilman Johnson in my absence. You all were instrumental in helping WGTS 91.9 with their food drive. I have to give kudos out to Mr. Stevens and Ms. Minor for, when this came, when this request came to us, it was the DJ or the, I guess, on-air personality that said, hey, we're looking at a place to give back to La Plata because we're talking partnerships. And it has been several years that I have built a relationship with and partnership with WGTS. that I have built a relationship with and partnership with WGTS. And the first thing they said is, we want to help La Plata. So we looked at various avenues. And when it couldn't be Safeway or Giant, they suggested Town Hall. And our town manager and assistant town manager were instrumental in getting that going. So thank you both for participating in that. They raised over 2,000 or they gathered over 2,000 pounds of food that will stay local in La Plata. So that is, just during these times, that was really very, very powerful. I also had the chance to go down to pick a wax in. And I know that Lieutenant Posey was there as well. And our cadet was down there. We got to tell a little bit about what it's like to be a mayor and on council. And boy, the questions were really good. And we have some future mayors down there, that is for sure. I also attended the Business Growth Advantage Program graduation, where this is entrepreneurs that, that own a business, some in the town of La Plata, but definitely in Charles County, had an opportunity to go through an accelerated program where they were taught how to grow and scale their business. And I was quite honored to be able to recognize their achievements and praise them for that. One of them was Arcadia Computers, which is right down there by Galazios. I know Chuck, you, or Mr. Stevens, we didn't get to see you at the parade, but you were there helping out. You were one of those ones behind there and Public Works and everybody and Lucinda. The weather was iffy, but it did not damper the spirits of those participating. And what it was truly about is to honor our veterans and the veterans' families as well. After that, I popped over to the funeral home here to say my goodbyes to truly a great man. He, Buddy Hindle, was the President of the American Legion, post 82. And it was so nice to see members of the community there saying their goodbyes to and the family. He will be buried on Tuesday, the 25th, up at Cheltenham Veterans Cemetery. So I will attend that as well. And several of us attended the Veterans Day Ceremony. Councilman Johnson, Councilman Sampson and I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony at the American Legion. And that was really nice to honor our veterans and their families for their sacrifices. Last Friday, I went up to Annapolis and met with a law firm to explore the potential of working for the town. And I will be meeting with a couple other potential firms in early December. I went on Friday night to the Warfighter Advance Gala, which is denim and diamonds. And Warfighter Advance, we had one of our officers that went through Warfighter Advance. They support veterans facing challenges. And this was, the amount of money raised was insane. And it's just a neat way to really help our veterans out. Coming up, we have Farmer's Market. This is the, this is the second to the last Saturday. So this is your opportunity to get all of those goodies that you might need for Thanksgiving. So don't forget that, 9 to 2 on Saturday. On Friday, I will be attending Springdale's 32nd Annual Auction, where they always have a theme, and this one is Mission Possible. So that they raise money and it's kept locally here. And it's those adults living with disabilities. On Saturday, we have the Walk to End Homelessness that will be here. So if anybody is available, 9:00 AM, that will walk around town. And then the Rochambeau Victory Towns 250th Reception, I will be participating in that on Sunday at the Maryland Veterans Museum. We also have the MML State of the Municipality that we will be going to up in Annapolis, which is December 4. So we can find out all the great things MML are doing and where we stand. And then I am also participating in the Women's To Watch Symposium at CSM on the 5th of December. I will be one of their speakers and moderators. We have the Old Time Holiday Gathering, that is December 7. Thank you to Public Works. They did amazing job. Yesterday I left here at 6:30 and the tree was not up, and the tree is up here. And it's just a little glimpse of what is to come. And it's just, it's such a magical time on that day, come rain or shine or snow. It's still, the spirits are so high on that. So I'm looking forward to that. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, not only for staff and all of our workers, but to all the residents in La Plata. Enjoy that time, family, friendship. And that concludes my report. But wait, we have a reason to go into closed session tonight. So I will entertain a motion at this time to go into closed session. Anybody who wants to read?
I'll do it. Make a motion for closed session, Statutory Authority to Close Session, Section 3-305B8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The topic is pending Maryland Department of Environment litigation. The reason for closure, discussion involves communication regarding pending litigation, not appropriate for public disclosure. The second reason for closed session is 3-305B1I, to discuss appointments, employment, assignments, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appointee, employee, or official over who would have jurisdiction. The topic is town manager performance appraisal process discussion. The reason for closure, discussion concerns the evaluation of an individual employee.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If you are in favor of going into closed session for these said reasons, please indicate by saying aye. If not, nay. Madam Town Clerk?
Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you so much. And that concludes our regular meeting. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.